Order please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Get a move for approval of the agenda. Approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes us down to our city administrators' report. So you've got your government report at your seats. The official announcement list was published Monday. It showed St. Genevieve as one of ninety-three projects, the tap project for St. Mary's Road. So it has officially been acknowledged and we will have a ordinance to pass at the next meeting to agree with their and sign their agreement for the project. TACTTC meeting next week. We'll finalize the job description for the tourism director. Then we can publish the job opening. Got one person to interview for the welcome center. That'll be tomorrow. We've only had one application at this point. We'll re-advertise, see if we can get some more. There's a hospital workshop that is next Tuesday that I'm participating in. We did it originally. It was online and we did it by Zoom. They're gonna now have one at the hospital. So that'll time you up for most of Tuesday, just so you're aware. Asphalt paving is done on the selected streets. We'll look at the streets for next year at the next work session. So the October meeting, we'll talk about that. Go through those, go through the list. And we have not received official notification for our sidewalk and trail at Kermar Camp Park yet from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. But we have attended a few meetings to go over the application and the reporting requirements. I'm thinking that's leading in the right direction, but we'll see. Very good. Any questions?
Oh, we had a couple of unexpected paving things done, correct?
No.
A couple of unexpected paving things. That's really generic in my world.
Well, I thought maybe that popped in your brain, you know? Anyway, between Ridgeway and Maple, that was something that I was never aware of.
Yeah. That was Ro- that's called Roger Alley. So we have Roger Street Alley and we have Roger Street. And that's Roger Alley. That was on our list.
Talked about it a little bit, but I think we ended up approving both alleyways.
I wish we would have not done that because people are really complaining now why Ninth Street is so rough and why that little alley that nobody drives on is so smooth.
But Ninth Street needs engineering.
Right.
We want to do it the right way, just like the streets in my neighborhood. So, and Washington.
But the everyday person didn't see that.
Yeah. So hopefully putting it on record here.
It's not. I drove one of them.
I drive a good speed driving.
I'd do it to avoid Ninth Street.
He really likes that.
Tell me unnecessary wear and tear on my bus.
Oh, come on.
Very good. Any other questions for his reporters? Okay. Takes us to the, our staff reports. The tourism, Happy, you're up. Okay, so you've got my report. Lots of activities coming up. Night of the Werewolf is this weekend. So Friday night is a, for a special night for Night of the Werewolf and the main event takes place on Saturday. So they've got two nights now that they're, that they're doing that. spectacular World Heritage Days and Deja Vu Spirit Reunion are all on Saturday, October twenty-second, along with a conference meeting of the French Colonial America. So I mean, it's a ton of stuff on the twenty-second coming up. And then November fifth is our next big event, which is Pecanapalooza. French Colonial America is organizing that. Starts at ten AM with a five-k race. We've also got a group of, the St. Louis Bieters Club, I think is. They've got a name anyway. They're gonna be in town. They're also gonna be walking the area outside of Pecanapalooza and the ten-k race last. We got some other folks coming in because of Pecanapalooza, but also they want to walk the levee. They think that's a cool spot to get up and do a route. So, so we'll be having, we'll have those folks that day. Website stats for September, not that good. Also remember, we're going from August to September. So August is sure to fit. September was Oktoberfest and that was the first year for it. So I'm not surprised that we have our, the number of clicks are down on the website. But that probably is the biggest reason is that we were real high on in August because of sure to fit and the amount of activity that people were looking or trying to find more information about that. So interactions are down eight percent. Again, clicks are down forty-two point nine percent. Viewing was up four point one percent. Calls from online are up four point eight percent. So we're at least getting some, some contact that way. August to September twenty-twenty-two, asking directions down forty-six percent. Profile views are down nineteen. Searches were down twenty-six percent. Selected search categories, starting with the highest searches. Here's what people are looking for. Wineries, welcome center, attractions, but then in general term and St. Genevieve in general. So that's what people are looking for when they're getting on our website and ask or putting something in, you know, for a Google search, looking for wineries, number one. We continue to tweak the visit St. Jen website. Met with a citizens group last Thursday. We started making some improvements to the site and I think we've, we've done a pretty good job in trying to follow their, their lead on what they think we need to work on. JAD is still assisting with the more complicated plugins and stuff, but I don't know what I'm doing. Or I just can't find it. It's there. I just don't see it. However, I'm going through the program. So getting help that way. And the volunteer group really is engaged and they'll be meeting regular again after we make some current changes because what I want to do is get all the changes done, look at it, soak it in and come back with another round of changes to the website. Facebook activity, we're up to four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight likes. Our reach is down twenty-three percent. Visits have increased eighteen point eight percent. New likes are down two point one percent in the last ninety days compared to the last ninety days post-reach is, I'm sorry, this ninety days compared to the last ninety days. I'm not, I can't remember exactly how they divided that out, but anyway. We're down fifty-nine point four percent. Engagement down sixty-four point four. Highest reach post in the last thirty days is Oktoberfest, two hundred and eighty-nine percent. Four people liking than the median post and what we have on average. Went to the governor's conference on tourism last Wednesday. Had a chance to talk to some of our partners and the, and the folks from the Missouri Division of Tourism. The governor wasn't there, so I didn't get a chance to talk. And we will have a TACTTC meeting next Tuesday. We'll discuss the tourism director position. Had some recommendations from a subcommittee that we met about two years ago, or two weeks ago on and on what they think the tourism directors' main responsibilities need to be. And that, that's what we're going to include in the job description. So the whole group will have a chance to look at it, go over it, discuss it, and then we can go out and advertise. I don't expect to hire anybody in collaboration. At this point, it'll take thirty days to advertise, at least a month, month and a half to interview and then have somebody start. We're looking at another two weeks, probably minimum. So be aware of that. We should have that out though before the end of year and then we probably could have somebody hired before or early twenty. Question?
Content with the new job description? Do you feel it's appropriate?
Again, we can discuss at the TACTTC meeting, see what everybody thinks of it.
That welcome center, how many hours a week?
It's, you're looking at five or seven days a week, eight hours a day, whatever, you know, whatever that is mathematically. I have one person right now that works two days a week of the application I have. That person says they'd like to work two days a week. That would cover four out of our seven.
So are they making any headways with that map situation and making sure there's sufficient supplies of that?
Yeah, we, the problem ends up being we make changes to it because of businesses moving in and out. We've had so much, had a lot of turnover, but enough small turnover that it was hard to keep the maps up to date. Every time I'd make a change and then order the maps, we'd get them two weeks later, then it changed again. So so far, we've got maps sitting at, we've got about four hundred, yeah, about four hundred maps sitting at the welcome center that we'll be able to use. And I've got another group on order. So we'll, we'll be ready to keep up. That's it. Thank you very much. David? Community development.
Evening everyone. You've got our report there. You can see there was a heritage commission meeting on the nineteenth of September. Our next meeting is this coming Monday. Approved our certificate of appropriateness and there were three administrative approvals. Building department numbers you have there. Comprehensive plan, the RPC plans to have the outreach survey we've been discussing out by the end of this month or perhaps the first week in November. I did put on there that the next stage of development is, or the next stage is vision development. That'd be kind of November, February. And if you still have the timetable, we originally shared that that's gonna get stretched probably till at least October twenty-three, if not farther. Planning and zoning, Mint Ten-Six approved a, or recommended a special use permit that'll be on public hearing and for your consideration tonight. I put some guest lodging stats in there because a couple of alder persons have asked me about it. So currently, and this is within the city, not the county. We have twenty-one addresses, approximately twenty-three units. Six of those addresses are shared units. So that's either someone lives in the house and rents out their basement or commercial store on the first floor and a VRBO on the top. Other remaining fifteen, five set vacant for years. So it's good use of those, those five addresses. And so ten are structures that at one time were rentals or single family and now they're guest lodging. Just wanted to give you that information in case you have. That's really all I have unless you guys have any questions.
That same kind of building inspecting for one unit as it is for residential or?
Anytime it changes hands, it gets an occupancy. If it gets a special use. If it gets a special use permit. So thirteen of those twenty-one have special use permits. It's a special use. They get an occupancy every year because those are in residential districts. The other eight are in commercial district, not requires.
Hey David. Keith?
Good evening everyone. Should have my report too. Probably the biggest thing is we are back down to only having one vacant slot in our department. But unfortunately, I think I've got one that's getting ready to leave. He lives at home with his grandma and grandpa on there for health reasons, considering moving back to where they came from. I might be losing one. I also have two more potentials that are considering moving over here to join our department and actually doing like the last two did, moving over here to join. So it's kind of a constant, ongoing matter. But we're in the upper ranges of what we had been in the past. So hopefully we can maintain that. Couple of things on grants. The radio grant that I wrote for last year, radios are all finally in. They've been on backwater forever. Hopefully within the next month or so, we should have those installed. And then I wrote another grant for that same program the following year. And I'm real hopeful with some of the wording that was in email because it sounded like when they asked for additional information, it was kind of worded where you'll know how much you have to spend whenever the grant comes. But they didn't come out and say we have it, but it sounds real hopeful at this point. I also have before each night, request to go for the conservation grant again like we did last year. That will require some matching funds from the rural fire fund, but it's always there and available if we need it. And I put in here a note about the art thing that Happy made me aware of. I intend to look into that. It opens up tomorrow according to what I've been told. And if I can work it out, I'll try to go in there for some more turnout gear and maybe some, replace some helmets or something like that. It's up, up to twenty thousand dollars with a fifty percent match. So we'd have to spend ten thousand. But I'll look into it, see if it's something that we can get accomplished and then bring it back to, obviously for approval. The red flag warning has just been extended today. We have a warning out for the extremely dry conditions. We just came off a twenty acre brush fire down in the Bigfield a little bit ago. So it'll be on Facebook page after a while, but we remind everybody, please don't burn right now. It's so dry, humidity and wind and everything. So put that out there. Be open to any questions. Yes, sir.
So why don't we have a burn ban?
We haven't really done a whole lot with burns. I talked to Happy about it at one time. I don't know what the actual procedure would be to place one in. Wouldn't be a bad idea right now.
Let's see what ordinance allows us to do or how that works. I don't know if the fire chief declares it or the mayor declares it.
It would be my recommendation that we do, but.
I've heard some county-wide ones, but I don't know if, does that fall into municipalities also? Or is that just county-wide totally?
I think that's county-wide. Perry County South has had one for last month. And we were just included in the red flag warning yesterday. It was the first time that we've actually been included in a warning. I do have a printout at, at home that came, or at the office that has the requirements that the fire marshal's office from the state has. I showed that to Felix the other day as our emergency preparedness. I can bring a copy of that in too and give it to Happy. It basically leaves it up to the individual governing agencies as to what you want to do with, from what I can remember of the article. I can bring a copy in that, drop it off tomorrow.
On the training you had on the electric vehicle, I was, after you got that guy beat. I read an article that day, one fire department used twenty-five gallons, twenty-five thousand gallons of water to put a electric vehicle fire out.
Electric vehicles are so new, it's hard for us to really determine the best way to put them out right now. Everything that I've been reading, everything I've been keeping up with, they're telling us that basically the way electric vehicle operates is this huge battery pack with individual cells. So if you get a shard across one of the cells, it will actually continue a, basically a chain reaction until all of those are burned up. There's documented cases where they spent twenty-five thousand gallons of water on a fire, put it on a tow truck, talked it back or taken back to the tow yard and it catches fire two or three times more in the yard. There's documented cases where the tow companies are actually digging holes in their yards, filling it with water and dumping them in there and let them sit in water to try to extinguish them. The problem is that the battery pack cases are so airtight and sealed tight that you can't get into them to get foam or water on them. You're basically cooling the surrounding area and trying to get the temperature down. If you can't get to the seat of the fire, it's gonna keep the heat going and they're just gonna be a continuous thing. They're having numerous issues recently with charging stations too. People are waking up and finding their garages on fire because they're charging an electric car in their garages and they overheat and have fires. So I'm not saying they're a bad thing, but they're so new technology, it's really hard for us to try to keep up with it. So I did about a half hour presentation with some slideshows and what information's out there right now to make our guys aware. The bottom line for what we're doing with them is surround them and protect exposure and let them burn themselves out. It's about all we can really do. Make sure nothing else burns.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Any committee reports?
Not really unless you just want to know that park board, we were gonna maybe have a movie, move our October movie to the Night of the Spooktacular, but we just don't have the right volunteer staff to set up and stuff. So calling quits on the movie series, the outdoor series, so.
Okay. Very good. Takes us there. Are there any public comments? No public comments. At six seven, six eighteen, we'll have a public hearing. The mayor of the board will hold a public hearing to consider a special use permission, permit request from Cheryl Ann that will allow guest lodging at two six zero North Fourth Street in R2 General Residential District.
Guest lodging from Cheryl Ann and Judy Sumster at two sixty North Fourth. Application was received on September twenty-first along with filing fee, notice of meeting mailed to the applicant on September twenty-third and to the adjoining property owners on September twenty-third. Application was referred to the police and fire department also on the twenty-third. Heard back from both chiefs on the twenty-eighth, no issues. Meeting notice was sent to the media on the thirtieth and posted in the Herald on the twenty-eighth. The planning and zoning commission meant on October sixth and recommended approval. And here we are tonight.
Any questions?
There were no concerns brought up at planning and zoning by neighbors?
One neighbor brought, asked a question about having a rear gathering area so that there wasn't so much gathering maybe in the front. And this address does have a rear area for outside entertainment.
Any other questions? We will end the public hearing at six nineteen. I'll need a motion for the consent agenda. Approved on consent agenda.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just for clarification, with the Lexiful, do you know, are we able to print out like a copy of, like the? What am I?
Contract?
No, like the policy or, right, the, it's a software to basically, I'm losing all the words here right now. Like basically it helps you with your policies within your fleet department, right?
Correct.
Your codes of conduct, how you handle certain situations and whatnot. That's all online. If there were an issue with the company or the software, the internet or whatever, do you have like downloaded copies? Are we able to print out what that is? If it was a public record request?
Yes.
Things like that? Are we able to access all of that in print form?
Correct.
Okay. And then is the renewal price similar?
Yeah.
Okay. Every year?
I believe so. And then we will also be looking at a tier bump next year that will dive deeper into our policies and procedures and, and do a little more digging to get them up and running online as well as reviewing everything that we have in our records at this point.
And that's just for law enforcement? That doesn't include, because I know they have fire department possibly include that.
Yeah, this is just.
And there's no bundle savings?
Actually, we're getting a bundle savings because Lexiful also does our training. But we didn't look into the, into the fire department aspect of it. I'm not sure if they've got it or not, haven't. Yes.
Lexiful does cover some stuff, but it's a high cost for the amount I think we would get to use out of it in volunteer agency. They do give you references and things like that that you can go to. They, that happened to me a bunch, trying to get me interested in it. But the times I've seen them at trade shows and things like that, I don't really think it fits what we do right now. I, I'm not ruling it out as a possibility, but right now I don't think it's gonna benefit to us.
Fine, I was just curious, blurring on the topic, so.
Happy, you basically said they will review our policies in place now?
They're going to look at and make sure that we're in line, in alignment with whatever state statutes, federal court decisions have been, make sure that we're good in that. What we want to also have them do is dig in deeper to our, all of our codes of conduct, all the standing, standard operating procedures and then do a review of that. That's a different tier. So that's a step up from what we're getting at this point. Okay?
Thank you.
I would second the motion if there's no other discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us, there's no old business, so it takes us to new business. Bill number forty-five fifteen, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract for auditing services with Use Nick Hayrow and Stroeder LLC, certified public accountants.
I have a quick question, Matt. Are we not advertising that for bids just?
No, we advertise. We got two, two quotes and two RFPs. So it was advertised.
So is this the one we just most recently used or is this the one we had before, the one we most recently?
The one we had before. The one we had, which became Sickage, they contacted us and said that the rate was gonna have to go up because of inflation. At that point, it's like, well, that's outside the contract. So we had to go out for, out for bids or out for proposals.
And I saw in our contract that we're asking to approve here, the, I believe I saw the rates for the year two through five?
It was three years. It's a three-year contract.
Three years, excuse me. Was, was the increase similar from Sickage?
So all three years of B Sync weren't more than the three years of Sickage. It was pretty, pretty comparable in the amounts that would go up.
Okay, that's mainly what I wanted to ask you. Sorry, did we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number forty-five fifteen, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract for auditing service with Use Nick Hayrow and Stroder LLC, certified public account. Approved. Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five fifteen now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-eight.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-five sixteen, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with BT Electric LLC of Bloomsdale, Missouri, on the electrical improvements, St. Genevieve Water Plant Project in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second reading of bill number forty-five sixteen, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with BT Electric LLC of Bloomsdale, Missouri, on the electrical improvements, St. Genevieve Water Plant Project in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five sixteen now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-eight.
Next, takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-five seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a billboard participation agreement for the St. Genevieve Museum, Museum Learning Center.
Motion to approve. Second.
Can I ask you a question about this? Is there artwork going to be similar to what we're running now? Or are they doing their own design?
They're doing their own design that we're gonna put up to begin with. And then they're looking at working with our vendor to maybe match something that we've got. But to begin with, I don't have those files and I don't have the ability to make those changes in the artwork that we have.
Why not?
I just, I don't have the talent or the ability.
But we, we have the files. I mean, we have access to those.
They're, and they're, they are actually through Robinson. They're the ones that have the files.
Okay. But the museum's gonna be putting together their own campaign and determining what they want to do for their percentage.
So it's, what ends up being twenty-five percent of the rotation will be dedicated for the museum learning center.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley?
How is the price determined?
Based on the billboards that we are committed to be running on, not the ones that we added to. We went and looked at how many impressions there were, what that cost was per impression, and then divided that out as to how many would occur over a thirty-day period. So we just picked, you know, yeah, granted, we've got some months of thirty and thirty-one days. But when we figured that out, it ended up being like seventeen thousand impressions and they're paying for a quarter of those. That's how we figured it out. Any other questions? I have a first and second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number forty-five seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a billboard participation agreement with the St. Genevieve Museum Learning Center.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five seventeen now becomes ordinance forty-four thirty-nine.
Thank you. This is the first reading of bill number forty-five eighteen, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Cheryl Ann that will allow guest lodging at two six zero North Fourth Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to the second reading of bill number forty-five eighteen, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Cheryl Ann that will allow guest lodging at two six zero North Fourth Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five eighteen now becomes ordinance forty-four forty.
Thank you. Need to approve of the little bit of visitor sewer for the Floor Street Sewer Lining Project?
Do you approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In other business, uh, I was contacted by the American Red Cross, I'm gonna get it out there publicly. They're in dire need of volunteers here in Saint Genevieve. Uh, they've had a lot of their volunteers head to Florida. Uh, and there's, so what they ask us is they're gonna put it on our website. Uh, there's some flyers. There's a flyer out there that I need to get printed off and, uh, just so everybody knows the information. But it'll be on the website. It's pretty simple to do, but they really could use some help here in this, in Saint Genevieve when they, one of their blood drives here. Want to get that out there and, and try to help meet the need here in our city. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session for real estate and personnel matters.
Motion to go in, close session.
Second. Need a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn? Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Motion carries at six thirty-one.